I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Could we have a roll call, please, Jeff?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Protem Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Jacamo.
Present.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Could you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Couple of announcements. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, March 13th, 2024, 6:00 PM here in the chambers. Raton Fire Department's fleet new addition. Mr. Mestes?
The Raton Department's new fleet is parked outside. And we invite everybody to take a look at it. And it's, they should be outfitted probably with the next 10, 15 days, sir? Yes.
Cool. All right. Public service advancement.
Mayor, if I can get you to take center stage, please. Police, I'm sorry. Police Captain Valdez, would you step forward? Chief?
Captain Valdez. Ladies and gentlemen, it's normally customary to stand up for the reading of orders. So if you would please stand. Attention to orders. Police Captain James Valdez is promoted to the permanent rank of Deputy Police Chief for the City of Raton, New Mexico, effective 21 February, 2024, with the date of rank of 27 February, 2024. Signed, Richard Mestes, City Manager for the City of Raton.
I would say a few words about Captain Valdez. His career spans 23 years, all with the City of Raton. There's no one better to hold those stars than the captain. So congratulations.
Deputy, do you want to say any words?
I'd just like to thank everyone here, everyone in attendance. Thank you for joining me on my special day. I appreciate all you guys, without all of you out there, and without the chief at the helm, this will never be possible. Thank you.
Police Sergeant Cory Koka, would you please come forward?
Attention to orders. Police Sergeant Cory Koka is promoted to the permanent rank of Police Captain for the City of Raton, New Mexico, effective 21 February, 2024, with the date of rank 27 February, 2024. Signed, Richard Mestes, City Manager, City of Raton.
Chief, you could rip those stripes off.
I have to say that Captain Koka, that's going to take some getting used to as well. His career spans just over 19 years, all with the City of Raton. He's an extremely dedicated employee and no better person to replace those bars than Captain Koka.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. I'm an emotional person, so, excuse me, but thanks for being here. Thank you all.
Please be seated. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mestes, introduction of new employees.
Mayor, Mayor and Commissioner, I would like to introduce our newest fighter fireer, Mr. Edwin Thomas Dimer, to the community. Chief Burke, would you do the honors?
So Commissioners, Mayor, fellow citizens, this is our newest employee, Edwin Dimer. He comes qualified as an EMT basic, and he is beginning his path with his fire requirements.
All righty, at this time, we'll start committed reports from Commissioners. Commissioner Honeyfield. Commissioner Jacamo.
Also discuss and include for example, the upper design proposal for their architectural engineering services for the storage building for, that former cooler towers were the plant. Discussing also emergencies, switch over to the south procedures to switch over the south line. After yes, General Manager Dave P. Seale reported on the tower outage that occurred on January 8th, and also for, well, Unit 4 generator produced every night for the month of December. Guzman Energy reimbursed the natural gas bill, which was $3,623.77. Solar, the rate produced 0.98% for Raton's demand for, and also for December or November, and 0.81% for the demand for December. Newsport produced 16.1% of the demand for December. Dave, close by, recording what he was working on, Jayden Welch started the burn work.
Thank you. Commissioner Schuster.
On February 6th, I went down with you all to Santa Fe. Well, you guys joined us on the 7th and 8th, but I was, I went down on the 6th and was able to have a short, brief, little conversation with Senator Pete Campos before the New Mexico Municipal League Legislative Day happened on the 7th and 8th. On the 20th, the Water Board met in light of the crowd we have here and everything on the agenda. I'm going to keep the remarks brief, but the, and Commissioner Chatter, or Mayor Protem Chatterley may have some addition. But, well, I'm going to keep them real brief.
So I left mine at home.
But the Water Department's moving along and doing well. And then on the 21st, at 9:00 AM, there was New Mexico Creative Industry Division, which is a new division in New Mexico, and they're going to help shape a creative economy all around New Mexico. And they had some pretty good ideas. They met at 111 Park. That was from 9:00 to 2:00. I was able to be there for most of it, had to run off in the middle of it. And then later on the 21st was the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Committee. And we'll be talking about most of those issues a little bit later on in the agenda. The most exciting thing that I thought was exciting was getting the possibility of partnering with the county on these gravel adventure field guns. I think this could be a really nice program for Raton and Colfax County. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. January 30th, I met with Dan Campbell and Al Litchfield and did some due diligence on my understanding of our water history so I can serve on the Water Board successfully. February 1st and 2nd, I was in Santa Fe for North Central New Mexico Economic Development District's annual meeting and special presentations. Also in attendance was Mayor Sagata. We do have several representatives from Colfax County. We have Brandy Dietz from Grow Raton as the economic representative on that board. County Commissioner Brett Weir is also on that board. And former County Commissioner Landon Newton serves on the executive board as well. So we have a good representation there. It was a very extensive meeting, so I'm just going to give the highlights. Their audit was clean, which was excellent. They discussed an MOA with Colfax County regarding restoring our community's affordable housing program. It's a pilot home project in the county that involves acquisition, rehabilitation, and resale of homes, and with the intent to sell those to local workforce. So Colfax County is probably going to start in smaller communities like Springer and Cimarrone first. They also discussed lots of the legislative priorities, both for the cities and the counties. And the Municipal League works very well with the Association of Counties, and they gave a great presentation to North Central. And we also had priorities of the Area Agency on Aging from our Mayor Sagata, who presented that, and North Central. One of the most important programs, we're hoping that they continue, is that grant and technical assistance with grant writing and getting funded for that. We use that here in Raton. A lot of cities are using that, and they have so much demand, they can't hardly keep up with it. One of the most interesting programs that they have that I find is they have something called WIN, or Workforce Integrated Network. It's going well. And within that program, there is the Good Jobs Challenge Grant. And so they have a mobile training unit that will come out to communities and do skilled trade training. And they stay in the community for about three weeks. It's a pretty incredible curriculum. And so I'm hoping, they said they've been working with different people to try to get that up here. So I'm looking forward to that. Friday, we had really interesting presentations. They had people who've been on the boots on the ground with the San Miguel and Moore County Fire Disaster Recovery Efforts, and just a lot of the lessons learned in that. And I know they've been working with Colfax County on a hazard mitigation plan, making sure that we have that up to date. They also, interestingly enough, had a representative from the Federal Reserve Bank of Kansas City, who is stationed in Denver, who talked about economic outlook for the United States and New Mexico. And one thing, you know, New Mexico is a little different than all the other states, which we already know and love. But one thing they did say is they were hoping that prices on bids and things towards the end of the year would start to fall back down and not be quite so high. We've been dealing with that. February 7th and 8th, as was mentioned, I attended the New Mexico Municipal League Municipal Day in Santa Fe. I also serve on that board, so I had a board meeting as well. They had state auto awards, leadership things, and a briefing on the issues. One thing of note, in the board meeting, they talked about the New Mexico Self Insurers Fund is going to stay at the reduced 75% off rate for workers' comp. And they are going to keep liability with a 25% discount. But as we've discussed, property is going to go up 20%, I think was their, their term. They're trying to have a better inventory of all the buildings throughout the state that are insured and really want to build up a little bit of reserve so we can avoid having to do reinsurance through that program. So that's kind of the future goal. And it was made very clear that we will need to report claims within 30 days of any event we have. Otherwise, we won't be able to claim that. They are hiring staff, more staff, and they are going to have regional officers, and they encouraged us to call anytime. The league budget's looking good. Annual conference will be August 13th through 16th in Close, New Mexico. And there was a really interesting discussion on IPRL law and public records that had to do with deceased individuals being requested and, and kind of put out in the public that were very inappropriate. But according to law, current law, that's acceptable. So definitely some need for IPRL reform. Also, that same day in Santa Fe, I attended a meeting with the Picaries Pablo regarding the government-to-government transfer for the land for a gaming facility. And I also met with a representative from the National Park Service regarding an agenda item tonight that I'll talk about here in a minute. February 13th, I attended the Raton Water Works Hydrant Testing Presentation with the Fire Department. Lots of information there about using third-party sources to test, flow, and inspect hydrants. And there is fire money that can be used for that service. We have, I learned a lot about fire hydrants. We have over 440 fire hydrants in Raton. And there's a lot of benefits to having this done professionally, and a lot of the local communities do that. It also can improve our ISO rating, which is already really good, but also improve what I find important to be safety. Safety of our firefighters and our water department. On February 20th, I organized a meeting with Marcy de Millian, who was the person I met with in Santa Fe from the National Park Service, and she is with the Rivers Trails and Conservation Assistance Program. She brought along Carl Colonius, an outdoor recreation planner with the State Outdoor Recreation Division, who heads up the Trails Plus Grant, which is the grant we have on the Fragrant Passage, as Jason is rebranding the Stinky Tunnel. So until we finish the Fragrant Passage project, we cannot apply for any more funding. But it was a really good meeting. We had Mayor Sagata there, Mr. Mestes, County Commissioner Sae Trujillo, Jason Phillips, Jayden Welch, and Melita Hine were also there. And we basically gave them an overview of the past efforts of outdoor recreation planning, such as the Bartlet Mesa Ranch, our Ball Field Project with the Quality of Life Grant, our agreement with CPW regarding Lake Dorothy, the Bike Path, the Pickle Bore Court Planning, the Gravel Grind Guide, that plans are underway for the El Portal Lot, which has public input forthcoming, and the Climax Canyon National Recreation Trail. We discussed potential needs such as trail development on city property in town and out at the park, and the wildlife area, and then our different parks in town, and kind of their outdatedness, and hopefully having some help with them. So what they do is they have a technical assistance grant that we're going to talk about. It's on the agenda that helps communities plan and design rivers, parks, and trails, and then also helps identify funding, and then follows up to try to keep you going with it. So it's not a money grant, it's just a technical assistance grant. Like I said, that's on the agenda tonight. It's a very tight timeline. That's due March 1st. And then Carl Colonius talked about the Trails Plus Grant. And then we took the two of them, Jason Phillips and I, took them around town, showed them the parks, and went up on Old Pass and Goat Hill and Climax Canyon and Roundhouse Park and the other parks in town. And they were really excited about the potential we have. As Commissioner Schuster mentioned, I attended the Water Board on the 20th. We did honor Al Litchfield, who is retiring from the board after, I think he said 33 years, but it was over three decades of being on the Water Board. Pretty amazing. We also approved a contract with Engineering Analytics to start design for the new sledge disposal site. One interesting thing they had was our water rate comparisons. All of our rates in Raton are lower than the state average. Residential is 36% lower, commercial is 23% lower, residential sewer is 20% lower, and commercial sewer is 19% lower. Lake Maloya is full and spilling. And then we also had a closed executive session related to personnel and collective bargaining. And the last, but not least, I am leaving Sunday for the Washington DC fly-in for Ports to Plains. Board meeting Monday, House visits Tuesday, Senate Wednesday, overflow on Thursday. And we're going to be asking our New Mexico legislators for $2 million in planning dollars to start looking at how I-27 might align and connect to I-25 in Raton. I know that was a lot. Thank you for your patience.
Quite all right. As for my report, seems like I was in every meeting that the Mayor Protem was in, so I'm not going to bore you all with the details. She did a very good job there. And Commissioner Jacamo covered the RPS, so that's my report for the night. So thank you. Thank you both. Appreciate that.
We were all in on the, a few of those.
We were all in attendance on some of those, yes. All right. Item six, items from citizens present. At this time, we'll take any comments from the citizens regarding anything that is not an agenda item. I ask that when you get up, please state your name and address all questions to the commission, please. Thank you. Seeing none, we will move on. Item 7A, deliberate an act on approval of February 13th, 2024, regular meeting minutes. You all should have had a chance to take a look at the minutes as presented.
Able to stand as presented, stand approved as presented.
We have a motion that the minutes be, stand as presented. We have a second. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, presentation on Shuler Restoration Committee Report by President Billy Donati. Mr. Mestes?
I would like to call Billy Donati to the lectern.
Thank you. Mayor, Commission, my name is Bill Donati. I'm president of the Shuler Restoration Commission, and this is our annual report to the city. Shuler Restoration formed in 1974. Major contract to paint the theater. Since then, our mission, some 50 years later, is still to preserve and continue the restoration in the Shuler Theater to create and improve the facilities. SRC was awarded the management contract with the city to manage the Shuler in September of 2015. Our duties encompass all aspects of the Shuler, except for housekeeping and maintenance, performances, meetings, including booking and scheduling, and technical assistance for the shows. The Shuler has always been a great partnership between the city and the citizens. We all love the Shuler Theater because it's owned by us, and we all have a stake in it because of our patrons and our foundations, businesses, organizations, and citizens. The preservation and maintenance an ongoing project, of which the city itself can take much of the credit and take much pride. The city realizes the Shuler's importance, and they take their responsibility very seriously, and we thank you for that. You've put the city's money to work. Recently completed loading dock ramp in the alley. Recent infrastructure improvements for the electrical hookups and electrical wiring. And also, we are going to get new carpet for the Shuler. The City of Raton provides the nuts and bolts, and the people provide the bells and whistles. The improvements that have been realized were not possible with just city funds alone, as we know. Our foundation partners, I need to name them, the Darden Foundation, also the Whited Foundation, Slope Prints Foundation, Laird Foundation, the Macaron Family Foundation. They have all contributed substantially to our total success for the Shuler. With their help and the businesses, organizations of the area, we've been able in recent years to install a new lighting system, an LED lighting system, to the tune of about $57,000. We just installed new speakers, and again, that came with a partial grant from the Macaron Family Foundation, new speakers in the theater, and with the help of a local business and sound engineer, Anthony Martinez. We like to shop local as much as we can. Our light booth has had several upgrades, and again, locally, thanks to our master electrician and fabricator, Tim Byrd. We just run a new HDMI cable. So in 2015, the State of New Mexico gave us a new projector, LED projector and surround sound system. So part of that is an DVD player. And also, the HDMI cable now run to the stage will give anyone who has a laptop the ability to hook into the projector and do their slideshows, their PowerPoint presentations anyway. So, and that was thanks again to Baca Valley Telephone and to one of our board members, also Zach Osborne. Our Visitor's Guide, we recently purchased an ed in the Raton Visitor's Guide as part of it. Also, we did a curtain repair, a curtain repair on our blue Cyclorama curtain. So there is a curtain that wraps around backstage, well, upstage. And it, because it goes around, it's called a Cyclorama. Actually, all it is is a glorified sheet. Well, the Shuler Restoration purchased that in 1997. So wear and tear, a lot of tears, a lot of dirt, et cetera. Our sheets got dirty. So we were able to salvage that, and we used Johanna Hill Leather and Lace Upholstery and Sewing. And that new cycl, the new curtain is a new curtain now. The old curtain is a new curtain. So again, the HDMI cable, also, we have to mention another of our partners, El Raton Media Works. And Jose Lopez, they helped us with some switching and with some technical aspects of it. Big part of our duties, collecting fees from presenters, and that includes a refundable damage deposit and also making sure they have liability insurance, according to Michael Ann Antonucci. Rental for the last year prior to when our Shuler Restoration Commission took over management, rental was $1,285. In '21, '22, a total of almost $4,800 collected. And then COVID hit us in '22, there were only $1,100, a little over $1,100 collected. Then, in this past year, '23, '24, a total of almost $4,900. And that includes shows by Santa Fe Trail School, Raton Arts Council, and the Raton School of Dance. They are some of our anchors. Shows, rehearsals, and meetings, we had 125 usage days in the Shuler Theater this past year. So definitely, we were busy. Raton Humane Society, Pictures with Santa, the Raton High School National Honor Society induction, school programs, Longfellow, Longfellow Christmas Program, movies for Raton Intermediate School and for Springer Schools, family and class reunion tours, music from Angel Fire, spaghetti and Western Film Fest, lip sync, the vigil for Alternatives for Violence. We even had a wedding ceremony in the Shuler on New Year's Day. So in addition to supporting the organizations that directly use the theater, we instituted several years ago a Classic Night at the Movies. That was with El Raton Theater. When El Raton sold and is now in the business of getting back up for movies, we moved Classic Night to the Shuler Theater. And we, since then, probably thousands of dollars have been raised for nonprofits. Raton FCC LA, Youth Heartline, Chapter N of PEO, Independent Writers, Raton Little League, Raton Crime Stoppers, Knights of Columbus, Raton Museum, all have partnered with us. Now, if we had to remain open on the fees we collected, we'd probably be a parking lot right now. That's where the city comes in. Thank you for your support, keeping those rental fees down, keeping the maintenance of the building up. Everyone who walks into the theater, including artists, it's a wow. It's a, oh, wow, this is great. Just for one point of reference, and I won't belabor the point. Shuler has been city-owned for its entire history. The Fox West Theater, which is the big sister of the Shuler in Trinidad, was privately owned for most of its life. It just recently got purchased by the City of Trinidad. They are now in the process of restoring, revamping, bringing everything up to code, and it'll be a nice little $25 million project for them. So again, all these years, just a little at a time, keeping up with the maintenance, et cetera. And we've got a priceless theater here that can, can be put anywhere in the United States, anywhere on earth. United States, anywhere on earth. So because of the city's commitment, foundations, and businesses, we have a vibrant schedule, including tomorrow night, classic night at the movies. We invite you to come. How to Train Your Dragon. All right? Might be good for state government, right? Okay. And so it is free, and fees go to the Friends of Sugar Creek Canyon State Park. Raton Arts Council on Friday has the French Family Band coming in. They're coming in from Australia, as a matter of fact, and they are world-class. They performed on the Grand Old Opry. This is just a sample of what the Raton Arts Council does, world-class arts that come in. March tenth, Divas Three. April seventeenth, Queen Bees, the Queen Bees Band, brought in by the Schuler Restoration. Raton School of Dance has their annual recital and program in late April. Coming in August is Sunny G. Back for a return. Sunny G. is a Michael Jackson impersonator. Spot on. Spot on. All the moves, great light show, et cetera. And then the Gate City Music Festival, one of our premier events, thanks to Raton Main Street. So thanks to the city, facilities maintenance Superman, Leonard Zamora. We want to thank other partners, Raton Fire and Emergency. We share quarters with Raton Fire Station Number One, and also, they put up the flag on top of the Schuler. They help us with snow removal, and when the fire alarm goes off, we don't have far to look. So, thank you very much. Dave Little of Alpha Graphics, he's done much work pro bono for the Schuler Restoration. Raton Main Street, Raton Arts Council, City for Community Innovation, countless others. Thanks also extends to our board members, who donate many hours to make sure the public is made to feel at home. Some of our board members are with us here this evening. Susan Ward is over here. Stand up, Susan. Stand up. She's not shy. She's not shy. And our newest member is Carla Morton. Carla, welcome to the Schuler Board. Thank you very much. Also, Adella Garcia. Where's Adella? There's Adella. We're short enough to hide. Adella is our concessions manager, and she only has, I think, three or four other organizations that she is with, just like most board members. So also, not with us tonight, Zach Osborne, our treasurer, and technical advisor, Maria Fleming. Redlich is our secretary. I am President Bill Donati. A hundred and ten years we're celebrating. The cornerstone was laid August twentieth of nineteen fourteen, so a hundred and ten years, thanks to you. Any questions?
Any questions from the commission?
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. You're doing amazing job.
It's an honor. It is an honor. Thank you very much.
And I've got to say, Bill gives the most detailed report.
It was good.
I love him. All right. Item C, presentation on Explore Raton by yearly report and updates by Patricia Duran, Director of Marketing and PR. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor and Commission, I would like to call forward Patricia Duran to the lectern.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Patricia Duran. I am the Executive Director for the Center for Community Innovation, and one of my main projects I handle is Explore Raton. So today, I'm going to be giving you the biannual report of what we've been doing for the last six months. Back at the end of the last fiscal year, New Mexico True reached out to me because I was using their hashtag all over the place on Twitter, and they asked if we would like to partner again into a co-op. And so I applied for their, their, their co-op marketing grant along with the Lodger's Tax Board, and we got, and we, we got picked to be a part of the co-op, which was really great. So we got awarded in May, and one of the three things we had, three packages to pick from, which they kind of curated, they went over some things with us of what they thought we needed, what suggestions that we had, and so we picked three things. We did a New Mexico True Photography Package, where they would cover three visitor experiences. So we had them come out on Labor Day last year, and they went to the Raton Museum, they went horseback riding in Sugar Creek Canyon with donated, with the donated, with donated horses from Blue Sky Ranch, and they also worked with Moss Adventures on a kayaking camping trip at Sugar Creek Canyon, as well as on top of Bartlett Mesa, because we're excited to start promoting that. So they did that. We got the pictures actually just recently, about a month ago. And then we also got a package for a four-seasonal social media influencer trips to Raton. And so we had, we just, we've only had two come so far. One came for the Callexco Spaghetti Westerns Fest, and he is from Austin. He's, I think he's at sixty thousand plus followers, and he captured Raton just, just the aesthetic of our Wild West history and culture so beautifully, and so we were excited to have him. We also had a, she's from, goodness, I can't think it, Denver area. We had a social media influencer come, and she was going to spend a few days here in Raton, but she got snowed out, and so she only got to make it to Vermejo. But as a result, we had over a hundred social media influencers from her inner circle start making plans and started following us on social media. And we've had a couple people reach out to us, and we have about five social media influencers in the pipeline that we can pay outside of the, the co-op grant once we get requests from them. And so they've been putting Raton on the map. We've been having a lot more followers. The recent Instagram kind of video and TikTok video, we had about twenty-two thousand views on that from the last social media influencer, and that's just Instagram alone. So I haven't done all the calculations from Instagram to TikTok to Twitter. So they're, what they're doing is putting Raton on the map and telling all of their friends and all their family, hey, make us, make us stop here. So it's been really great. We have two more trips planned. We have one coming in May with one influencer, and then we have another big trip coming in June with five influencers coming as a whole collective package for the June. So we're excited for that. And then the last package we got with New Mexico True was a social media digital package, where we got sixteen videos. Right now, I just posted one so far, and we've had eighteen thousand views on Instagram, or Facebook alone, I'm sorry. So that, and we had a social media digital marketer who was hired through New Mexico True. She came out at the end of October, and so she got lots of the changing colors of the leaves. She worked, we worked for Sugar Creek Canyon. She went down to Solano. She went downtown. She ate everywhere. I packed her day full for three days straight. So she did a great and fabulous job. So as a co-op partner with New Mexico True, we can utilize the New Mexico True brand and their name, because that has a great reach. As you know, being New Mexico True branded is an honor. And so I went through trainings with them. We are currently using their New Mexico True brand guidelines on our website, also going to start utilizing them on Facebook now that we have some video content and photo content from now that was just finally delivered. So I'm also going to be applying for, I haven't put this in the report, but I will be applying for this year's co-op grant, again, with Lodger's Tax. And I met with, and they invited, Mexico True invited me out to the legislative session at the end of January, as well as the New Mexico Trends Tourism Conference. And we learned a lot from Expedia, Hotels.com, Verbo, about the next trends that are happening, and specifically, a lot is having to do with AI, a lot's having to do with film, also a lot is just, we had a lot of things to go over. So the New Mexico True team sat down with me, and we're planning a whole campaign around reaching outside of state lines, particularly in California and Texas, and kind of where our reach is, having to do with either radio or television. So we're probably going to have a Raton commercial hopefully by next year, so I'm excited about that. And then, one of the biggest things that we have going on right now is the twenty-twenty tour, twenty-twenty-four Raton Visitor's Guide. We are finishing up ad sales by this Friday. We're going to break even on it. We are ordering twenty-five thousand Visitor's Guide ads. About five thousand are distributed in the local area. About fifteen thousand are distributed across the state, and then, and we ordered an additional five thousand with Lodger's Tax to be distributed up in the Pueblo Canyon area. So a lot more reach this year, and we're, our plan is to focus more in centrally the front range of Colorado, because those from Denver down to Trinidad, they're traveling south to, to go on vacation or do a getaway. They're not going north. So we want to hit that demographic. And then last but not least, one of the big projects I worked on in the past year was redesigning the Explore Raton website, and since we acquired the domain, we got it, I finally got it switched over to officially exploreraton.com, so that it's not exploreraton.sustainraton.org anywhere when you type it in. So that is officially done, as, and I also got our Google Ads grant, which we spent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year for free from them. That got switched over and approved actually yesterday. So all is well, and we're, we're, we're on the map. Do you guys have any questions about that so far?
Any questions?
I've got, I've got one.
Yes.
Not really a question. I was contacted by a social influencer over the holidays.
Yes.
Did an interview with the person, then they presented some, you know, packages that they want. But I've lost touch with, I've still got his email, and I would you be interested in having that?
I believe he reached out at the last meeting.
It was postponed, but he did reach out.
Yes.
Cool.
So we're, we're
And I told him I would, put him in touch with who I thought we could put him in touch with, and could go from there.
Yes, and then he started following us on social media last month as well, so he, he came a part of that social media influencer group. He saw us and was, I think he reached out on his own.
Cool.
Matthew Ballack.
Yes.
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 Yeah, we had a very good, I thought it was a real good conversation.
Yes. Okay. So analytical wise, the last six months, we had, we reached three, three thousand, three hundred thirty-eight thousand people on social media alone. So that's split between, if you see on that pie chart on your report, it's split between TikTok, Facebook, and Instagram. The majority of it coming from Instagram and Facebook. And then our website reach, all the traffic that is coming to our website is coming from that Google Ads grant that we run. And so we typically have about three thousand people per month that have been going to our website, and you can see that a lot of the traffic is actually coming from the United States. And then we have traffic that is starting to come actually outside of the state. So we're having Europe, we're having India, we're having China, and then we're having Japan and Australia. So we're starting to have some traction outside of the states, and they're clicking on things like relocation specifically in that area. So that's kind of interesting. And then total for our website reach, we had two hundred thou, two hundred twenty-three thousand website reach in the last six months. So in total, we've reached over half a million people this last couple quarters, and so we're anticipating that will hit above one million people that have saw Raton on social media, website, the internet, all that fun stuff. And that's trackable, so. And that's all that I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Patricia.
You're hard work, too.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Item D, deliberate an act on event forum for a cultural celebration at Ripley Park on May fourth through fifth, twenty twenty-four by Carmen Martinez. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor and Commission, Ms. Carmen Martinez has submitted an application for a cultural celebration of Cinco de Mayo on May fourth and fifth at Ripley Park. The event is sponsored by Little Seas and Bubble Hard Soap. This event will feature live music, a food court area, and there are current plans to bring back the Chihuahua race and folklore dances. The insurance and necessary forms are in your packet. There is no associated funds, city funds with this act.
Cool.
She is here. Do you have
Questions or comments?
Yeah.
Carmen, would you like to say anything?
No. Well, maybe I will.
Okay, come on up, please.
I just, I just hope we have
Come up over here.
Come up here. Come up here.
We got to be able to get it recorded.
I just hope we have a good turnout. We haven't had Cinco de Mayo in probably ten years, so it's been a minute, and many people are wanting it.
It's a funny
Because it's always been, no, it's not the start of summer, but for so many people, they felt that it was the start of our summer festivities.
Absolutely.
So I'm really excited, and I hope we can have a very good event.
How many vendors do you have already?
Probably ten so far.
Get the word out.
But it's still early. It's, we only put it on the website on Saturday, so we have ten people signed up, ten vendors already. And I know another one talked to me today, so I'm sure we're going to have probably forty, hopefully more.
Excellent.
Very good.
And it, and we're bringing, we're, some of our vendors are coming from Albuquerque. We had an event at the end of December at the Convention Center, and the vendors from Albuquerque had never been up north. They fell in love with Raton, and they're coming back.
Cool.
So, you know, that's what we need to do, too.
Absolutely. We appreciate your hard work.
Yes, well, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
I will move to approve the, the event forum for the cultural celebration at Ripley Park on May fourth and fifth, two thousand twenty-four by Carmen Martinez. Second?
Yeah, a motion and a second to approve the event. Cinco de Mayo. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Item E, deliberate an act on Arthur Johnson Memorial Library Board Appointment. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor and Commission, Mr. Ron Schuster is requesting reappointment to the library board. His packet is in, you all have a copy of his packet, and again, this is a reappointment.
All righty. Any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ron Schuster for a reappointment to the Arthur Johnson Memorial Library Board.
A motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Schuster to the library board. No further discussion? Thank you. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate an act on Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Recommendations. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor and Commission, there are two items being recommended by the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. The first item is for twenty-one thousand five hundred to be awarded to the Gravel Adventure Field Guide, to produce Colfax County Gravel Adventure Field Guide, like the one you see here. This money will be used in conjunction with Colfax County and Angel Fire, who have yet to be approved, to provide publication and all supporting design, layout, and distribution. This action is being funded by seventy-five hundred dollars, coming from the Print Advertising Fund, and fourteen thousand coming from the Contingency Fund. The second item is for one thousand dollars to be awarded to the Center of Community Innovation for the use of social media influencer to create content for various van life platforms and highlight Raton or explore Raton as a destination. These funds will come from the Contingency Fund.
All righty. Any comments, questions?
Did you say Angel Fire was not?
They have not approved yet. We're the second one to approve. Colfax County approved. We're the second one.
I'll make a motion to approve the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Recommendations.
A motion and a second to approve their Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Recommendations? Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Item G, deliberate an act on memorandum of understanding between the city of Raton and the Raton Little League for the twenty twenty-four season. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor and Commission, this memorandum of understanding is an annual agreement that constitutes the legal agreement between the city of Raton and Raton Little League for the common exclusive use of the baseball, softball, and soccer fields. The purpose of this MOU is to define and clarify the responsibilities, terms, costs, and security deposits for both parties with the use of improvements and maintenance of city facilities. There are no public funds associated with this act, and I do believe we have a member from Little League?
I see Mr. Walton sitting over there. Got anything to say, Dustin?
I, yeah.
Sure. Come on up, please.
Um, pertaining to the MOU, we have a lot of changes and additions coming to the fields, including bathrooms, batting cages, you know, there's stuff we've been working on with Jason for months now. And I think, I don't know how we have to do it or how it'll work out, but come back to our MOU once those things are installed, and list them, and figure out them, you know, from them, or then. But I don't think that, I don't see any concerns with anything between us and y'all. So I want, I do want to introduce Daniel Cummings, Hillary Pasquale, Jerica Martinez, and Jennifer Valdez. They're here with me. They're on my board. We have six other people that are scared to come. Thought they had to talk. But But, uh, so we have a big board. Last year, we had eight people on the board. We expanded to eleven. Um, and just a little brief, I know it's not on the, on, on your guys' agenda, but I found out, I went to the district meeting Saturday in Vegas and found out we are, um, up, I guess you'd call it, to host the district tournament. Um, in two weeks, I gotta go bid for it, you know, and sell ourselves. Um, I do have a packet of all that stuff. Hillary worked on it really, really hard the last couple of days. I'd like to give you guys to check out, real detailed economic impact and stuff like that. I've talked to Jason about a couple of things that will have to get done, um, to the fields, minor things, but to get, um, to get ready for that, I will let you know, um, there's nine, nine cities in our district, you know, and they will bring, last year, just off last year's numbers, there's thirty baseball teams, thirteen softball teams. That doesn't include what we're bringing this year. We didn't take a softball team last year. We're also adding a senior softball league, division to our, excuse me, division to our league. Um, so I think that's really good for the girls in that kind of dead time before they get up and eligible for JV. Um, so yeah, we plan on sending all the All-Star teams that they'll allow us this year. Um, last year, we brought a lot of leagues back or divisions back, and we just felt like we weren't ready yet to send some of those, uh, kids. Now we are, you know, um. Excuse me, I, I don't think we've been back since the last All-Star. We had both our teams that we sent, both one district and one on a state. Um, so we're represented well with our teams and everything we provide, um. I don't know if you guys knew yet, but we bought another new scoreboard for our minor league field. It's the exact copy of the one we put up last year at our major league field. So that's on the, in fact, that'll be here. It ships out of Indiana, I think, March seventh, so it's, it's closed. And then we have also, um, ordered a new mound, portable mound, and that's kind of full getting ready for that All-Star tournament. Uh, we gotta, when you do the All-Star tournament now, you host eight, nine, ten-year-old division, nine, ten, eleven, ten, eleven, twelve, intermediate, junior, and senior for baseball and softball. So it is gonna be a two-week, if we, if we win it and we get it. Um, June fourteenth to the eighteenth will be softball tournament for all the, all the divisions. And then June twenty-first to the twenty-eighth will be for the baseball. So we're looking at thirteen days with nearly nine hundred people coming to our town.
That'd be awesome.
So, in the packets, Hillary already went through all the lodging, all the fuel, all the food, everything's detailed. She does a great job. She's, she's new to town and new to our board, so she's doing a phenomenal job. Um, other than that, like I said, when, when the new stuff arrive and gets put up, hopefully before our season starts, um, come revisit you guys and have those discussions then. Um, couple dates. Registration ends, it's open right now, ends March fifteenth. Tryouts for our baseball and softball teams, and it's not really necessarily tryouts, it's the draft, you mean, you guys know. Is the seventeenth, practice start April first, opening day, April thirteenth. And A- April thirteenth, you know how big of a festivity that is. There's a lot of people down there in those few hours, so. It'll be good. Um, again, thanks to you guys, thanks to Jason, anybody else, all the workers that work on our fields and keep everything up. Um, I think that's all I have. Am I forgetting anything? Hillary, yell at me right now. No? Okay, we do have a new website, brand new. Um, it's really long. We don't know how, we were trying to figure out how to shorten it up, but if you just Google us, it'll take, actually take you, Raton, or Google Raton Little League. Um, it's under bluesombrero.com, that's who it's through, so if you, once you find that, you'll find ours. And that's in fact how everyone registers now, is online, so there's no paper. Um, and we had an in-person kinda, to help everybody out with the online stuff, this past Saturday at the Elks Basketball Meetings, and I believe we're going again this Saturday or? This Saturday also, later in the afternoon for the different age groups, so probably twelve to two, one to three, somewhere around there, to hit those other kids. Any questions?
Any questions? Jase, you got any comments?
Oh, he snuck in.
Thanks, Jase.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
I taught this kid well when he was in Little League.
Mayor and Commission, first of all, I'd like to thank this group of parents. What you see here is a, quite a few of these parents don't have kids currently in the system. They volunteered an additional year to kind of do a succession planning to keep Little League alive and well-funded. Um, coming, uh, to us in the future, we're gonna have to address some things that we haven't had to in the past. The new scoreboards are clearly owned by Little League. We didn't muddle our MOU with the details, but we know they own them. I, not that they have another field that they probably take them to, but it's important to kind of clarify that. We've been talking to community partners about donations and the nature of government funding being what it is and procurement. We've kind of asked that they steer those directly to the Little League nonprofit where they can do improvements that they want. It'll benefit our facilities, but it'll be, for them, won't be constrained. Um, 'cause some of these offers are from, uh, local banks and such that might be more of a construction-type methodology. Um, when Dustin and I talked about All-Stars, we, I told him, go get it and we'll figure out how, how we're gonna figure that out, I don't know yet, but, um, our facilities won't be probably a hundred percent ready by the time we get there. Um, but visiting with Hillary, I mean, she's gonna have the numbers for you, but this is genuinely what Lodger's Tax is made for and heads-in-bed scenario. My staff will take on soft cost of maintaining fields, trying to get them ready for play. We'll absorb what we can there, but there's probably gonna be a need outside of what we can do in public works for this. Um, quality of life, got the update today that the hygiene pods for ladies' filter scheduled to ship, possibly be here as soon as Friday. Probably take us a couple of weeks to get plumbing and everything established, but we should be porta potty free, hopefully soon at the softball field. Uh, the major league field, you know, we're twelve, fourteen weeks out before those restrooms arrive. Found today on page one hundred and eighty-eight of House Bill Two is what I believe is wording, extending quality of life application. It's part of a one billion dollar coronavirus poorly identified subsection of this bill, which DFA hasn't quite, I don't think, figured out that that's what this is. If that is indeed the case and I can get confirmation, we're gonna move forward with our bathrooms and everything, but I think it might be important to take a pause because visiting with Dustin and Danny, Little League has kind of changed some rules since our facilities are built. Some of our backstops might be not, not be future compliant. They're more of a netting than a chain link scenario. Um, I've got some heck of a deals on some of these bathrooms and bleachers where we might have money to kind of just reallocate within the budget, not necessarily coming for more money yet, but able to extend this project and do a little more. Uh, the wording on our grant agreement isn't exactly line up to the budget that we proposed. It's just general improvements to the Raton ball field complex. We're under that umbrella. There's probably things we can do. Um, but, you know, when we're talking this number of peoples, even our future bathrooms, like Dustin said, a lot of times there were porta potties. In our MOU, this year, we have an agreement to provide, um, bathroom for them. Last year, if you remember, we ate, we ate some porta potties because we didn't have restrooms. I would expect at least partially, we're gonna do that, kick down some of them when we can and minimize those costs, but, uh, mostly just excited to have a group that's really fired up about providing youth sports and, you know, we've got a reinvigorated Parks Department that is already starting to make great strides on the ball fields way before the season started, and I think, uh, we have some of the best facilities in the state, but we just need to upgrade a few things, but if you would pass the MOU, that's the first step, and then we'll just keep working together from there. Any questions, if you have it, I'll be happy to stand for it. Thank you.
Dustin, if we can do anything to help you guys out, let us know. We'll see what we can do.
I will move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Raton and Raton Little League for the two thousand twenty-four season. Second?
Yeah, motion and second to adopt memorandum of understanding between City of Raton and Raton Little League. Any further questions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
It was all approved, yeah.
We did, we did. Item H, deliberate and act on Senior Citizens Center Kitchen Upgrade Project Quote Utilizing State Price Agreement Number Four Zero dash zero 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 dash two three dash zero 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 three four. Mr. Messis.
Mayor and Commission, we're replacing, um, chipping and peeling laminate Formica countertops with stainless steel and adding stainless steel edge guards to protect and repair existing corner beads. The contractor is committed to work being completed no later than six fifteen, and funds needed to be expended by six thirty. Attached is a quote, uh, from Colt Builders in the amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, including the New Mexico gross receipts tax. In addition, one percent of the grand amount, sixteen hundred and fifty dollars, has been set aside by the state of New Mexico to be spent for art in public places. These funds will not expire. This work is being paid for by a grant capital outlay from New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services Department.
Alrighty, thank you.
Good completion of this project. I mean, they got a lot for their.
Yeah, got a lot for them. We put on, uh, walking shoes here, walking cooler.
Yeah, it's gonna be nice. Yeah, excellent.
These countertops will be really nice for them. And hygienically better.
I'll make a motion to approve the Senior Citizen Kitchen Upgrade Project Quote Utilizing State Price Agreement Number Four Zero 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 two three zero 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 three four.
A motion and second to approve the upgrade project for the Raton Senior Center. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item I, deliberate and act on Mitchell and Cruz Architecture Change Order for the Schuler Theater Utility Upgrade Project. Mr. Messis.
Mayor and Commission, this change order is for Tim Bird to trace electrical circus, circuits so Raxis Engineering can complete their design of the electrical system update. This will include locating all areas of cloth wire so it can be replaced. Raxis Engineering assumed the project was more straightforward, uh, for example, updating the nineteen fifties electrical job to the current code, and it did not realize there's essentially a rat's nest that they were walking into. So they have wiring from the nineteen fifties, seventies, eighties, and two thousands. Uh, electrical needing needs to be consolidated with some areas of wire already updated, but other areas with original cloth wire. So this is for twenty-four thousand, uh, nine hundred, and this action is being funded by the NEH grant.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Messis?
How much?
I have.
Was how much?
Um, t- t- twenty-four thousand nine hundred.
The way it's written, it says it's, it, Bird will do it for thirty-six hundred.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you talking about the original contract with the architects?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I don't remember that, that number, but it was over, it was like, I wanna say over a hundred thousand. Or maybe, no, I think in the wrong project.
Think of the wrong project.
Wrong project.
I think this is actually perform the task for thirty-six hundred plus tax.
Yeah, but he wants to know the original amount we were paying.
The amount we approved from the month before. Uh, 'cause I, I kept thinking they did a site visit, how did they miss this? 'Cause I know I specifically asked, I believe, Mr. Phillips, how familiar these folks were with doing these kind of projects, and apparently they had a crack record, so I, that's why I don't understand how they missed this.
I guess they, according to the slider, they need to verify the live circuses, circuits, as well as those circuits that can be uh, potentially abandoned and removed.
Can I direct a question, Mr. Phillips?
Sure.
Did somebody do a walkthrough with these folks when they looked at this facility originally?
Yes, I believe Jayden walked through this facility with Veal and Associates.
Do you recall that Jayden indicated they did the, uh, coal spaces under it?
I'm not sure that they went to that detail. Um, you know, my understanding of this is, you know, from an engineering perspective, you've got basic design. This is kind of next level investigation on it. So, I mean, if, if they looked at the panels and when we were talking scope of work, you know, um, not to disparage their engineers, but they have a different kind of skill set than the contractor, so, I mean, I think we could have, they could probably do this for significantly more cost, but I, I don't think when we initially identified scope of work, they were thinking we were going to drill down circuit by circuit and eliminate specific, you know, knob and tube here, chase ground loop, stuff like that. I mean, I think in, in my opinion, it's a pretty miniscule, uh, change order considering the work being done. When, uh, they talked, when Jayden talked to me about what we were gonna have to have an electrical contractor do and knowing the amount they charge an hour, I, I expected it to be at least double this, but, uh, I'm not shocked that they miss it in their, in their fee proposal. I mean, with my experience with engineering proposals that, that we've completed, it, it's a, it's a greater level of detail than I would have anticipated that they would have, you know, straight up saw outright. I mean, I think you come, you see the electrical panels, you know, you wanna do some electrical work, but then, you know, you get into the details and you find out that the Schuler shares half its circuits with the fire station, and I'm not sure that all of that was really identified to them. I'm, I'm not sure we still know exactly ourselves where the Schuler wiring runs. I mean, it's, it's just that complex.
I, I guess I, 'cause the, our architectural firm, it just makes me wonder if they didn't do their due diligence as they should have. I mean, if you're bidding budgets, like, is, you folk owe the money.
Well, and, and that's, the, the difference in, in engineering versus, versus the bidding is it's not usually a firm fixed proposal to begin with. I mean, you end up with a rate sheet at the end and contingencies that, you know, engineers usually bill hundreds of hours for. So we have the basic architect, which is Veal and Associates. Underneath them, we, we require them to supply sub consultants for various disciplines. They brought Raxis Electrical in, uh, and Raxis has requested this additional information. But, um, you know, again, not disparage electrical engineers, there's kind of the five thousand foot view of the Schuler versus, you know, the circuit by circuit. And, I mean, I, I, I think still, um, money well spent to have, have Tim Bird do it. I mean, I, I, I don't think it's truly that big of a miss on their part that they couldn't see what's behind the wall, because I don't think without some destructive testing and stuff, you'd have gone through that. And I believe that their walkthrough was in advance of the fee proposal, but the scoping meeting and subsequent stuff is probably after they put that price together, so. I mean, not an ideal situation, but, you know, this, this project is definitely not that straightforward. And, you know, ultimately, the only goal and from my standpoint is to get the Schuler electrical right, which was gonna require a little more money on their part, but, again, uh, they were the only firm that proposed on the project as well, you know, it was a competitive process, but it was a competition of one. It was either accept or reject, and I, and honestly, I, I don't think that they've done a, a bad job. They seem qualified to do it, but, you know, I'm, I'm more engineer-oriented than architectural, so not my strong suit by any stretch, but I think if that, if Jayden was here, that's pretty much how you would explain it.
Chief, you got a comment?
So, with, to answer more to your question, they did show up. They were here in the Schuler side. I was apprised that they were present, and then they did a walkthrough to include our shared corridor of the Schuler, of the old fire station, original fire station piece, and then they were walk through, um, with our electrical issue we had in twenty twenty-two. Then it was identified where, and they were shown all of our, um, sources of power, and then their eyes became larger. Um, because they have things like Jason had mentioned, of items of wiring that were dead-ended. They were left in play, the unknown of that middle corridor of the original station, which They were left in play, the unknown of that middle corridor of the original station, which also ties into the Schuler and then feeds also into some of the original part of upstairs of Station One. So they were present, they did the walkthrough, then their eyes got larger when they saw the full totality, which was in the bid proposal, but the full totality of said project when they did the site walkthrough. It was a two and a half hour, almost three hour walkthrough just of the station alone, um, identifying.
Now, I guess my only other stupid question is, did they bring any test equipment so they could even test circuits for what's line, what's not? Or did they just run it blind?
I can attest that they did do some testing of wires and grounding on my side, I cannot attest to the Schuler, correct.
Alright, I, I guess I'm, I'm displaying a little reluctance here, having built projects, you just, this is something you don't miss. Because that's a good part of the whole project design. I, I just don't want it to turn into a, the owners return to the trough again for another change order and another one.
The one that was approved at our last meeting was actually a change order for the commission chambers electrical upgrade.
So it was not?
No, it was not the Schuler.
Yeah, I was trying to think, I don't remember doing this.
I know, I had to look at the minutes.
I've seen this.
Yeah.
We did the architectural approvals, what I was thinking of.
And if I may interject too, from the Schuler Theater Schuler Restoration, anyone who knows the Schuler wiring would be Tim Bird.
No, I'm not doubting that, it's just I'm doubting this firm when they came and looked originally, it's like, they should have been cautionary, but, okay.
Alright, thank you.
I understand your concern, but I think it's a project that needs doing, so I will move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the change order for the Schuler Theater Utility Upgrade Project. Is there any further discussion, discussion or questions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item J, deliberate and act on purchase of Raton Police Department units from Malloy Los Lunas utilizing state price agreement number zero 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 two zero 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 one two one. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and commission, the Raton Police Department are requesting to purchase, um, three vehicles for the police department. Um, they are going to purchase three two thousand twenty-four Chevrolet Tahos. And this is a pretty good price, um, probably about four thousand dollars savings on each vehicle. This action is being funded by police salary savings and law enforcement protection fund.
And this is just for the vehicles you'll still need to go through and get the kits put in?
Yes.
Is there a reason why they weren't built Chevys instead of Fords?
Uh, I think the price and, um,
Availability?
Availability, um, they can get these a lot quicker. There may be some difference later, you know, when they have to do maintenance, you know, they might have taken them out of town. But I think the savings right now is pretty substantial.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the Raton Police Department units from Malloy Los Lunas utilizing state price agreement zero 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 two zero 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 one two one.
Have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of police, Raton Police Department units. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item K, deliberate and act on bid award for the Coors Building structural repairs, Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and commission, this project is to stabilize the back wall of the building to prevent collapse, um, similar to what we've seen at the Golden Rural, um, McCardo Building, uh, further north on First Street. This is a second time going out for bid, we received only one bid. There will be potentially a couple of change orders beyond the original scope of work. They were left out of the original scope to make it easier to obtain apples to apples bid as explained, uh, to the city engineer by the former city manager. This action is being funded from a general fund and was budgeted to this project, uh, for this fiscal year. But, you know, the change order, we're looking at, uh, potentially stuckling the back bricks because they are very brittle. Uh, but the big part now is to shore up that wall.
Any comments, questions for Mr. Mestes?
Motion to approve the bid award to Archilatic Construction LLC for the Coors Building structural repairs for one forty, one thousand four, one hundred thousand forty-nine, three hundred and ninety-six, forty-five with GRT.
One second.
Motion and a second to approve the, uh, to approve the bid award to Archilatic Construction. Is there any further discussion?
We got an appraisal of this building, what did it do the price for?
I don't have the exact figure, Michaeline, do you remember what the appraisal was for?
Is it anywhere near this number?
Jason around.
Oh.
He's hiding.
To be honest.
Mr. Phillips, do you recall that building, pretty?
No, I was not privy to the appraisal of the Coors Building.
I could go try and pull the files, if I could find it. Did you go across those and really go through that file?
I didn't.
I'm not disputing the amount or anything, but I don't know if there's a building down on First Street that's worth that, let alone a repair.
Well, there's several options we can go, we can postpone until we find out information or entertain a motion to approve as is. There's several ways we can go here, folks.
If you want to move on to another item, I can look through email real quick and see if I can find something, I just, off the top of my head, I have no idea what that number is.
When was that, uh, I can't remember when the appraisal was done. It's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while. More than a year, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would assume it would have been in advance of the LEED RFP agreement, I guess, and.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any guess on firm, for this?
Is it something that would, would, it would have changed my vote, probably because we've got, we've bid a, a contract to have this MRA project going, right? So I feel like we're moving forward on fixing up this building. I mean, the other option is to tear it down.
So what is our cost benefit analysis spending that kind of money? I mean, what is the return to our general fund, say over the next ten years? Will this money come back to us?
Grocery seats from a viable business.
It's an economic development project, right?
So we do have a pending grant application through Bright City, through Ann Tice that she's put in that is going to cover potentially, I don't know how that works to back cover this, but I know that she's just put in a tremendous amount of work into that and I had to supply her with a lot of paperwork, um, on behalf of ourselves, that are, are matching. And then, of course, the whole leather folks that are in there and our future use of the building, but that was a substantial amount of money. I actually don't know what her, what her, her ask was, um, but I know moving forward that that was going to cover, um, hopefully a, a lot of this. Um, and as I say, I don't know if that's retroactive or how that works. Um, and then, of course, we have our own monies that we've been putting into it. And my whole, our whole business is just stalled sitting there waiting for that back wall.
Right.
Um, and we've had such a, a great outpouring of interest in what we're doing in the building that I'm, I'm hoping that, that we will have a, a big impact on revitalizing First Street with our foot traffic. I mean, even today, I had twenty, twenty-five people in there throughout the entire day, uh, and there's no one on, on First Street right now.
Right.
That's an heirloom.
Yeah, part of the MRA agreement, which we could, you know, I know that you weren't here for that, so you, you don't have that history, but it is a job creation element and a, a certain amount of time before we, I can't remember how the, what the terms were in terms of years, but it's a very specific agreement on a return for that, the investment in the building. That revolves around job creation, uh, and eventually typically there's usually a purchase option or a lease option, you know, for payment, payment at the end of the term.
Well, I guess the other thing I'm looking at there, both them, is this is the tip of the iceberg. There's no heating system, the electric's empty.
I think there's a grant on the, uh, agenda as well that they're looking at from USDA and that's coming up item after next.
Right.
For money for that kind of thing.
Right, and we have a match of that general fund for forty-one thousand bucks. So that ups this any to almost quarter, or well, almost two hundred thousand dollars.
Right, and we had budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand for this whole, with this project, that was budgeted with this in mind, knowing that this building would need work.
But we don't have the roof fixed that initially caused this damage to that back wall nor the heating system. Uh, I, I can see where we're going to get something half finished.
I believe the way the LEED is stated and all of that, there is options in there to where we should hopefully break even. That's, that's the best I can say, Mark.
Yeah.
Well, then, may I direct a question to you, Mr.?
Of course.
So, it's a little retail block is what you're creating.
So, the first floor is retail with a restaurant, it's not a full restaurant. First floor is the retail space for Moss Adventures. We also will be supplying, we're doing a concessionaire pro, uh, contract with the State Park for, for kayaks, canoes, and mountain bikes, um, to be provided up at the park. We are on the second floor where I'm still doing demolition remodeling and that is going to be the Raton Bunk House, which is a sixteen to eighteen bed hostel style lodging. So that's beds and heads, we've already had a, a great response to our pre-marketing on that. And then in the basement area, we're putting in a digital print, um, it's not just T-shirts, but laser etching and other printing materials down there, as well as a large four color printer to do on demand trail maps and any small brochures and that kind of thing for, for any, any public that we're to support with the events and the trails. And, um, that's not really going to be a moneymaker, that's more of a service.
So the.
So it's three businesses, it's a business on each floor.
The commercial kitchen is, how is that construction going to be?
So that's a basic, I did a basic restaurant, I don't need to put a hood or a big stove. What I'm actually doing is having a very minor amount of restaurant equipment in there where I am serving. Um, I have vendors that, that have Australian meat pies, South African meat pies, that kind of grab and go. Um, a lot of it's going to be for the Boy Scouts. It's going to be, um, after two or three in the afternoon, I'm going to have coffee and tea. It's very low level stuff that I don't have to have a full kitchen license in there for, so it's, it's a very basic kitchen.
So with this type of operation, you can get a help certificate?
Absolutely, as soon as I get all my stainless steel fixtures and everything, all my, once the plumbing and all the, everything's infrastructure's done on that back wall where we have a design to, to, to put everything in. And I've already actually got a consultant who's in here in town in the restaurant business who's looked at my, my plans and helped me with that.
And he's licensed in the restaurant?
She is, correct, she's out of Albuquerque, she's had restaurants for decades.
The only other concern I, I had when we walked through the building today, um, New Mexico was kind of funny, a commercial building. You're supposed to have a license on the premises, contractor's license. Just, just be careful, I, I, because of my line of work, I've dealt with this building inspector.
So the only thing I've been doing so far is cleaning up the building and doing, doing minor demolition and, and.
Well, that counts, you can't even paint the building technically without a license.
Okay.
So, just, just go, come around sometimes, so.
Well, I've been working with the, um, who I've been using for reference, and I've already been to Santa Fe once, is the, the, um, State Historic Preservation Society. And they've been, and, and, I'm trying to get Coors involved, but I've been going over with them because there's actually such, such a small amount of, of paperwork on the building, but how to proceed with the level of, of preservation that we want to do. The building's been remodeled so many times already that that's sort of out the window, uh, but we're trying to bring back some of the original elements and then guiding in that.
Cause the, the patio grange is not addressed in this.
I think that's what we're looking at next, as, as Mr. Mestes mentioned, the, the stucco, the draining, the, the gutters, the, and trying, trying to get that in the two fifty budget, those other items there.
Cause I guess the other issue I've gotten with this though is that grain step needs to be taken first before this wallwork is done. Cause otherwise then,
Right.
you're combating that issue and it's going to spoil this work.
That's understandable.
Yep.
I, I do believe the historical value, uh, um, really all the building, or most of the buildings on First Street isn't, you know, is nothing but positive for economic development. And, um, you know, I just, I just feel like we've owned this building and I think we need to, we need to do the work.
You're very much a tour guide when you have a building on First Street. I, we get people down there that aren't shopping, that are just there to see the buildings. And I've, I've had to do pictures, yep, do all my history lessons and be able to point them out.
And, and we're already seeing, the other day, my husband and I were watching the movie and we saw a quick shot of First Street. And in fact, it was the Coors Building and down the street from there. I had to run it back and go, look, look, that's First Street. But I, you know, I think that's happening, you know, we're, we're being noticed for our historical values. So I think, I think it's worthwhile to do our due diligence and take care of these things.
Well, I guess, my underlying thing is,
Yeah.
with the salary basis we've got, and we're taking this out of our general fund, doesn't bode well for city employees when we're spending this on something that doesn't make the praise for, and I'm going to spitball here, but probably a third of what just this repair cost is.
Sure.
Having owned a business down, or a building downtown that's this age or older, they're, they're not cheap to own. But the city's guilty of not following through with periodic maintenance as it should. And all of that's why these wheels are probably coming in where they're at.
Oh, absolutely, I agree with that. Again, you know, in, in the past, Commissioner, uh, city of Raton struggled just to make reserves. And now we've got some reserves and we're trying to do what we can to develop economic growth. I just spent Friday, I was in Clovis with the mayor of Clovis and discussing some things. And the first thing they asked me was, how can we get in touch with your Raton Main Street? They, well-known in the state. They say, we understand you got a great program up there and your restoration of the historic First Street that's going on. So we're out there and I think we need to continue building that reputation. And I, I agree, this is a lot of money to fix an, an old building. Uh, you and I both have very old homes, I, I, I know what that cost is to, to repair things, so.
Well, and I, like I said, I, it just, it's the tip of the iceberg. What I saw today, this isn't scratching the surface.
Sure. I think we have other, other buildings and other properties that the city owns that we could not spend that money on.
Well, but it comes back to this thing, they're privately owned, it takes a whole different direction.
Right.
And whatnot, whereas, because it is a city property, it, uh, we're limited, uh, into what we can do to keep within a budget.
Sure.
Well, and I do think we have to consider too that we have that MRA contract, we, if we wanted to not do anything on this building, we would have to look at getting out of that MRA contract, which, which would then, you know, create a situation, I really don't want to be in with, because I'm very excited about the new, new program.
The whole process with DFA would be annoying.
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to call forward our Director of Economic and Community Development, who has had some experience with Main Street, not here in Raton, but maybe if you would comment on, um, historical preservation and what it's worth to the community to either save or burn it down.
Right, um, I've been through.
Right, I've been through the saving process and I've also been through the, the loss of something that has been in the community for longer than, than I've been alive and that has ended, than even longer than I'd even known the existence of the community that I lived in and that, that loss can be felt for generations and you will hear about, when you're in Main Street, you'll hear about, you know, oh, why didn't we save this, why didn't we save this? And, you know, and I understand there's economics to it and these historic structures, they, they, they cost money and, you know, like Billy alluded to about the Schuler Theater, I mean, good maintenance over the course of the lifetime of a building, just like with your own home, is gonna save, you know, save those properties. We're not always lux, we don't always have the luxury of having that in our downtown, downtown districts and our historic districts because owners change, you know, time passes, you know, all that. But preserving that, that feeling of authenticity and these structures that have had, that have seen the changes, the ebbs and flows of our community is so very important. They're, they are definitely an economic driver. Historic downtowns are something that people are seeking out when they're visiting, when they're picking places to live, because it's the true authenticity of a community and that's what embodies that. So, you know, it's not always a, a winning, an older building is not always a winning investment in terms of money, but it's a winning investment in terms of what it does for your community, in terms of pride, perser, preserving your history and maintaining that authenticity. 'Cause I, I lived in Peaking, Illinois for a long time and we lost our historic high school and that was a devastating loss and it was lost because it was auctioned off by the school district to someone that did nothing with it and just let it crumble. They've lost several other buildings and, you know, if, if I see pictures of those buildings, it just makes me sad because I, you know, we'll never, we'll never see those again and they were such an important part of who we were as a community. So, you know, it's a, I think it's important what we do with these buildings to, you know, help them, help maintain our authenticity and our sense of place and our identity. And they really do, over the long term, you know, contribute to our GRT and grow our economy. You know, they're not always gonna be the, you know, big flashy Apple computer type, you know, big, big economic drivers, but they are important regardless. Small businesses are important and they're a great place to incubate businesses that grow into bigger things and, you know, even to stay the size that they are. So I'm a Main Street person by training and history and so, you know, I am always gonna have a soft spot in my heart for these, for these buildings, so. Any, any questions? I'll speak more on the grant application that's coming up.
Just one comment if I may, I mean, when we had our economic development plan written up and we had our economic development boot camp, they reiterated to us that downtown revitalization needs to go a mile deep and an inch wide, that that can make a huge impact in your downtown area and that's where you always need to start. And I think this was, you know, we were excited because it's an MRA project, the first one we've tried to do and we have a great partner and I think exciting to see the future. And yeah, I don't wanna have a huge money pit either, but we do have a reserve for the first time in a really long time and that money can't be used for salaries 'cause it's not recurring funds, so it, it needs to be used for projects like this. We don't need to keep accruing money forever, we have to use it for something and I feel like this is a really strong economic development project that we, we have this standing agreement on.
Right.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the, on the floor at this time. Any other discussion?
Mayor, if I could just add one tidbit, I'm a little more pragmatic than, you know, the economic development impact or anything, but to me, the Coors building on the most basic sense boils down to liability. Common wall structure with two non-city-owned properties on each side, if we go the way of the Golden Road building and we are to fall in the wrong manner, it's not our building, which I would agree with Mark, the appraisal is probably, I haven't, even having not seen it, it's probably not the hundred and thirty-eight thousand, but if we take out the palace, we may not be insured. I mean, we got to this point, 'cause the Coors building was vacant for a number of years when the museum left and it transferred back to city hands and I'm not sure that this building is, you know, gonna qualify for insurance coverage in the event that something bad happens, but liability keeps me awake at night more than anything else and I think we've got a pretty big risk of this structure taking out somebody that doesn't belong to us, so, you know, I think if that helps steer it, it's not a dollars and cents decision when it could cost five-time damages if you, if you destroy the property next door. Having been involved in litigation for most of my ten years here, you know, if, whenever we can avoid it, I seek to, so it might be an ounce of prevention better than a pound of cure in the long run.
Thank you, Jay. Any other comments?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I, I just spent several days in Two Com Carri.
Could you give us your name and all that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Tony Molitor with Raton Homes subdivided here. But I, I spent several days in Two Com Carri and if you guys wanna have a thriving city and that's what I think we're all going for here, you gotta keep that front street somehow and have all your events there, you know, make it a creative thing. Two Com Carri is a disaster. You drive through that town and the, the generations that drove Route sixty-six, we're all dead, you know? And that whole town is just dying, it's just unbelievable. I went by the University of the School, their schools are shut down, half the businesses are abandoned, they look bad, it's just terrible. New Mexico deserves better, I think, so, you know, it's expensive, maybe there should have been an engineering plan, get the cost down right on that thing, but it's something I don't think you wanna ignore. I think you need to.
No.
Find the funds for it, so.
Right.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Record state, four to one on the vote. Thank you. Item L, deliberate enact on purchase of defibrillator utilizing striker state price agreement, number, I'm gonna skip all the zeros, nineteen dash zero zero three four A C N A S P O, master contract, O K S W three hundred. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, during the last commission meeting, you accepted forty K from the county for the purchase of a defibrillator. This is part two of the transaction, this action is being funded by Colfax County.
Any questions, comments?
Motion to approve the purchase of the defibrillator utilizing the striker state price agreement as listed.
Motion and a second to approve the purchase of the defibrillator unit. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I need to abstain, I'm a stockholder in Striker.
Okay, thank you for, for that. The record will show that Commissioner Honeyfield abstains. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N, deliberate enact on resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, application to United States, I think should say, United States Department of Agriculture, USDA funding for rural business development grant for the Coors Building. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, this grant is for ninety-nine thousand with a forty-one thousand match from the city to update HVAC plumbing and electrical. Funds will be utilized for upgrades to meet usability, safety, and structural standards, specifically to address the electrical plumbing and HVAC systems. I would like to call forward our Director of Economic and Community Development, who is involved in this grant and this action is funded from the general fund, which was budgeted towards the Coors building this FY.
Thank you. I'm gonna read our project summary for this, for a little bit of background on, on the project itself. I apologize for reading, but this is directly from the grant. This rural development enterprise proposal will allow a new business, Raton Adventure Centers, to function as an outdoor recreation and small business hub in downtown Raton. RAC is connected to Moss Adventures, a prominent outdoor recreation outfitter in the region. RAC aims to be a catalyst for the burgeoning outdoor recreation economy in Raton. Housed within the historic Coors Building, the RAC venture encompasses a comprehensive array of offerings. This multifaceted space will host a recreation rental business featuring kayaks, bikes, and outdoor gear, a cozy cafe, an adventurous bunkhouse, fly fishing outdoor outfitter, a custom print shop, and a storefront showcasing outdoor goods, supplies, and local artisan crafts. This dynamic blend of businesses is anticipated to generate six new full-time and two part-time jobs while safeguarding seven existing positions. While currently owned by the City of Raton, the historic Coors Building is slated to be transferred to RAC through the Metropolitan Redevelopment Area MRA lease agreement contingent unnecessary upgrades to meet usability, safety, and structural standards. The grant funds will be instrumental in modernizing the infrastructure, focusing on upgrading electrical service to the first floor and basement, updating plumbing, and installing a much-needed HVAC system. The building originally equipped with its nineteen oh six coal-burning boiler that is now not functional. By transforming this historic landmark into a fully functional and seasonally adaptable space, RAC aspires to invigorate the downtown Main Street business district. This endeavor aligns with the City of Raton's broader efforts to revitalize vacant buildings, stimulate economic growth, and mitigate urban blight. Outdoor recreation stands out as a pivotal focus of this, a pivotal focus area of the city's strategic plan and RAC, with its diverse businesses acting as anchors, holds a great promise for catalyzing the growth of the outdoor recreation economy in the region. It is poised to create jobs, foster entrepreneurship, and contribute significantly to the strategic goals of both RAC and the City of Raton, ultimately shaping a more vibrant and sustainable future for the economy. The grant, we have requested ninety-nine thousand from the USDA with a match from the city of forty-one thousand four hundred dollars.
Any questions, comments for, Elijah?
Malita.
Yeah, Malita, sorry.
It's okay.
I corrected myself.
Can you, Malita, please, jobs, they're pretty usual, the current rate?
That is probably a better question for Sandra, but over.
That is over a three-year term, depending on the, the finalizing and the construction of the actual building and when we can get occupancy and start the businesses. The grant, I believe, is a three-year?
Yes.
Management?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And if I remember, the MRA, was it over five years or?
Five years, correct.
We definitely need to get you a copy of the MRA, Commissioner Honeyfield.
Yeah.
So we can see that contract.
I will move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, application to the United States Department of Agriculture, funding for rural business development grant for Coors.
Second?
Motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Record state, four to one, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Item N, deliberate enact on resolution twenty twenty-four fourteen, application to National Park Service Rivers Trails and Conservation Assistance Program Technical Assistant, Assistance Grant. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, this is a non-monetary grant for technical services in developing a master park and outdoor recreation plan, as well as assistance in capacity and consensus to conduct desired park projects and to revitalize city parks. As Mayor Pro Tem chatterily spoke earlier, we met with the folks over at the National Park Service and they are encouraging us to go after this grant. There are no city funds needed to apply for or match this grant.
Okay.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four fourteen, application to the National Park Service Rivers Trails and Conservation Assistance Program Technical Assistant Grant.
A motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four fourteen. Any further comments, questions? I did sit in on this meeting, it was very informative and I think it's something worth Any other questions, comments? All, oh, go ahead.
So this'll just be for Raton proper or county-wide or?
This particular.
Other municipal partnerships?
This particular one is for Raton proper, the county is looking at potentially putting in for their own plan.
We, we do have signed on as letters of support from Sugar Eat, the county, school, the school district, Raton Main Street, and Grow Raton, 'cause a lot of this was spurred by outdoor recreation as the economic driver, so we wanted to get them on for support for this, but I'm sure they'll be part of our working group planning process, but I just wanted you to know that we had their, that they, we will be featuring a letter of support from the county, from, from S I specifically, not necessarily from the county commission, but, you know, just.
To answer your question, it, it, since Sugar Eat is part of city property, as is Lake Dorothy, it's potential that it could be included in the plan for trails and whatnot, but we would not plan for the state park, you know, that, since they're the ones managing it. But with Lake Dorothy, since we would be in charge of building the trails there, then we could potentially put that a part of the plan. However, they did say, I mean, this is our first go and so it may just be a smaller plan for now and then we would enlarge the plan as we go, so it's not exactly sure until they.
Barlow Mesa would be?
Barlow Mesa's not technically owned by the city, 'cause that's, we had that funding gap that we funded, but Game and Fish currently has the control of that property.
And this would also tie into other things that the city is working on, not only economic development, but for instance, our transportation plan. You know, how we lay these things out would tie in, you know, to how we look forward to, you know, improving roads and other things around the community.
So this is more of a design process, the build process happens later?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this is merely, this is merely planning.
Technical assistance on planning and stuff like that.
And it may not even enter into design for, you know, process, but just kind of an overarching plan with maybe some minimal design for.
Yeah.
A couple of projects, but then what they do is they help you source and figure out funds and then they follow up with you to see if you're trying to apply for those funds, so it's just really just expertise, technical assistance.
Yeah, it's a really great opportunity. The deadline is, we heard about this last, I guess, last week, we met about it, the deadline is, is Friday, March first, and we've been working to get it, to get it done and get it in, 'cause it's a great opportunity for the community. It's kind of one of those things you don't wanna miss out on. And thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for bringing it to us.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions? Motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four fourteen. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item O, deliberate enact on resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, approval of the January twenty twenty-four financial report. Michael, Ann, or Rick?
Whoever wants to go.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. In your packet this evening, we do have our financial report reconciled as of January thirty-first. You'll see that our ending cash balance in the general fund was four million nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand one seventy-two twenty, less our one-twelfth required reserve of six hundred and thirty-four thousand nine oh five. That leaves you available cash just a little over four point three million. As we talked at our financial advisory meeting this past week, keep in mind that we did do a temporary transfer of five hundred thousand dollars and that was to cash flow the purchases of the equipment for the film and media school. So as we continue with those purchases, we will submit our reimbursement requests to DFA before the end of the fiscal and replenish those funds. I've also listed for you the ending cash balances and the remaining funds that the city has. You'll see that the general fund grocery receipts recap for February, we did receive, our distribution was slightly less than the previous year by about twenty-five thousand dollars, but we are still six point four percent above our FY twenty-four budget projection. but we are still six point four percent above our F Y twenty-four budget projection. We also did receive another large distribution of property tax revenues in January. Those come from that first half of property tax that's due in November, and then we'll get another distribution probably sometime late May, early June. I was pleasantly surprised. We did receive the small cities assistance, and so we always talk about that one as being kind of the wild card. We're never really sure where that's gonna come in at, but it's usually distributed shortly after the end of the legislative session, which ended a week or two ago. So we did receive five hundred and fifty thousand twenty-nine dollars. That is two hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred and thirty dollars higher than what we had budgeted for F Y twenty-four. So, you know, we'll probably need to have some discussions here. I'll probably have to do a budget adjustment to increase the amount that was budgeted, but we'll have to decide, do we want those excess funds to go into reserve, or do we have needs for this fiscal year that we could potentially talk about? So, but that would require a budget adjustment at a later date. I've also included for you our comparison reports. The lodgers tax, still doing well, but, you know, about nine percent less than previous fiscal year. Gas tax, still continuing to see a decline in the gas tax. We're down a little over fifteen percent. And we've kind of talked about that one the last few months. That one does concern us because we use those funds to leverage most of our large construction projects, such as we did for like the Sugar Eat project in the East Tenth. We will be bringing to you, probably at the next commission meeting, the applications for the M A P and the co-ops. And generally, we would use those funds for the match as well. Cannabis excise tax. Our distribution for the month of February was pretty close to prior year last month's. Looks like it was almost two months' distribution, which I think was probably some sort of a correction from a prior month. I think I did see an article recently, you know, for sure Colorado has seen a decline in their cannabis retail sales, but I think New Mexico is also seeing some declines as well. But we just have one retail shop here in Raton currently. Looking at our actual unaudited financial statement, you know, we're in the process of trying to close out as many grants as we can. This is a little bit slower time of the year for construction. You did approve the senior center countertops this evening, so we really need to get started on that project so that we can get that closed out well in advance of June thirty. So we will definitely be working on that. And then as far as revenues, general fund, being that we're seven twelfths, as of January thirty first, we'd be seven twelfths into the new fiscal year, we should be trending about fifty-eight point three percent. And so our revenues, we're at fifty-eight point two-three, so we're pretty well on track for this time of year. We're currently in the process of collecting our business registrations. That deadline will be coming up, March fifteenth. So for anybody that hasn't renewed their business license, just as a reminder, it's thirty-five dollars now, but after the fifteenth, they would incur a ten-dollar late fee. So some of those revenues are kind of trickling in right now. And then overall, just department expenses as a whole, we're operating at about fifty point eight percent. As I've discussed in the past, some of these expenses, such as in our executive, we do run a little bit higher through the fiscal year because I pay like our juvenile justice coordinator out of our budget and then reclassify all of that at the end of the year once the grant funds have been collected. So, so it does look a little bit higher than it is. But overall, I would say that all of our department heads are doing an excellent job staying within budget. Is there any questions?
Questions, comments for Michael Ann?
I will move to approve the January twenty twenty four financial report.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year twenty-four January financial reports. Is there any further questions or discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record state that Ms. Chatterley, Mayor Protem, was absent for this vote. On recess for this one. Item P, deliberate enact an act on resolution twenty twenty four sixteen, budget adjustment number nine, fiscal year twenty-four.
Mayor and Commission, I do bring to you this evening our budget adjustment number nine. I did ask our city clerk to provide you with an amended version, so yours should say amended at the top. The changes that I had to make this afternoon prior to the meeting relate to the purchase of the police vehicles. When I was making the adjustments in the Fund Two oh six, I had initially zeroed out the equipment line item and moved all of that to vehicles, but then later found out that we had an outstanding purchase order for the Axon body cameras that were approved earlier in the fiscal year. I do not know, and I know we talked about this, that there could be potential reimbursement through the municipal league.
There is funds available for the body cam, so we ought to tap into that.
So it is budgeted, but I don't have anything as far as a commitment from them that we could get reimbursed for that, so. Do you know who I would need to contact?
Let's talk with Clinton nicely down there.
So for right now, I'm gonna leave that purchase order that was issued for the purchase of the cameras within the budget. We are purchasing the vehicles utilizing this year's allocation of L E P F funds. It's not quite enough to cover all three vehicles, but we do have additional salary savings that we can tap into through the police department salaries, so that you'll see that adjustment above, that I'm moving that out of salaries and transferring it into the L E P F. Later on, the outfitting of the vehicles, we'll have to get some quotes on those, and then we would probably bring to you a budget adjustment for the outfitting of the vehicles. But that would come probably well over a month from now, I would imagine. Other than that, I did go ahead and book the revenue from Colfax County, the monies that we're gonna use to purchase the defibrillator, so I've incorporated that into the budget. I am requesting that we do a temporary transfer for the quality-of-life grant. As you heard from Jason Phillips this evening, he's already moved forward with the purchase of the bleachers and the restroom facilities. So, you know, we are gonna have to pay for those items and then go through the reimbursement process. It's not a situation where I can hold the check and do the reimbursement. So we generally will cash flow these projects, and then we would move those funds back into the general fund once we get reimbursement from D F A. I was glad to hear that, I know it's not signed by the governor yet, but that there could potentially be an extension on those funds. So that'll take a little bit of pressure off to spend it so quickly. Other than that, at your previous meeting, you did approve the purchase of the Placer A I location intelligence and foot traffic data software. That will be coming out of our Fund Two fifteen, so I'm budgeting the first year's subscription of sixteen thousand dollars to come out of that fund. Is there any questions?
Seventeen, I believe, something like that.
I would say more than that. It's almost the cost.
Seventeen to twenty, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say, Mark, it's probably gonna be twenty this year. I don't know for sure though.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-five. Yeah, when you start talking, the light bars, the decals, I mean, it's gonna have to be the whole package to get it outfitted.
There's a different place that.
Yeah, so generally, being that the vehicles will be down there, potentially, they'll probably just take them straight to the outfitter from there. We've used various companies. I think M H Q is on a state price agreement. I think they're a division of Don Chalmers, but they have done outfitting for us in the past.
And on the cameras, if Clinton's not the one, maybe Tim Johnson, he's their public safety guy, former state police chief.
Okay. So, yeah, certainly.
Will be able to tell.
If we can get the league to pay for those, that would free up some additional, additional funds. And those funds, being that it's L E P F money, would just go probably, I wouldn't have to reduce the salary savings as much, and we would just put those towards the purchase of the vehicle. Or the outfitting.
Any other questions, comments?
Oh, and then I did mention, previous meeting, you did approve the commission chamber upgrades. We are moving forward with that. That change order and the travel for the ports to planes would be coming out of general fund reserve.
All right, any other comments, questions? Entertainer motion.
I will move to approve resolution twenty twenty four dashes sixteen, budget adjustment number one, nine, for fiscal year twenty-four.
A motion and a second to adopt resolution number twenty twenty four dash sixteen. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Q, city manager report. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, bottom line upfront, the past few weeks have been busy here in the city, but this has also provided the city with a number of collaboration opportunities. In addition to meeting with the National Park Service and New Mexico Outdoor Recreation, we have met with a number of community members for discussing on reintroducing the Chamber of Commerce to the area. We also met with the I T department from Pueblo, Colorado, who are providing the City of Raton with their expertise and advice on how we transition many of our systems to newer technology. This consultation comes to us without cost, and we send our collective appreciation to the City of Pueblo for their invaluable support. The big rocks, with the treasurer, we're still awaiting the results of our audit. We hope to have those back from the state sooner rather than later. With the police, the telescoping cameras have been deployed by the police department, and we have already noticed a significant impact on criminal activity where they're deployed. The fire department, again, their new trucks were outside, and we should be outfitted and part of the fleet within the next twenty, ten to twenty days. In public works, patching crews out in force. With engineering, we secured a grant for the fuel farm compliance updates for the overfill and spill protection out at the airport, which saved the city over twenty thousand dollars. Kudos to Jaden for that. Facilities, we have an HVAC issue that moved from the visitor's center over to the library, so we're working on that, and we're getting the quotes for repair. Again, for the city clerk, we would like to remind all Raton businesses to renew their licenses. The grace period expires March fifteenth, and businesses will be subject to a late fee after that date. With economic development, we now have Placer, and our community and economic development director is quickly ramping up her training so this powerful technology can be used of other members of the city. Mentioned in dispatches, Randy Trujillo and Adrian Mendez have been hard at work preparing the ballfields for the season and have been doing an excellent job. And finally, some closing thoughts. I would like to say a few words about expertise. In twenty twenty, Davis Tucker wrote a piece for the sixty-second marketer entitled, Nine Reasons Why It's Important to Work with Experts. This is his list very quickly. Number one, experts are more efficient. If there's one thing that separates experts from the layperson, it is that they're efficient. Number two, experts can provide unique perspectives. Experts are people who have seen it all, and if they have not seen it all, they have at least seen most of it. Number three, expertise takes time. Nobody wakes up with a comprehensive knowledge of their industry. Number four, experts have knowledge. Likewise, experts have a specified knowledge of their industry. Even if they do not know everything within the industry, they know where to find it. Experts can generate better ideas. Experts know what works and what does not work, which means what they can help you generate or focus on better ideas. Six, experts can expand your network. As experts have been in their industry for a while, they will have a vast network of people they know, which can benefit you in many ways. Seven, experts will legitimize your business. Working or being endorsed by an expert can give you exposure to your business needs, or in our case, the city, and can legitimize us in the eyes of our customers. Eight, experts will make more people want to work with you. Once you're legitimized by the experts, help, we will be able to attract the best talent. Nine, experts can stabilize your business. Life is much easier for you to accomplish goals after working with someone who understands your demands. I had a remarkably successful federal career, not because I was anything special, but because I was able to surround myself with experts. So, for example, today's meeting with Pueblo's I T department, so we could better understand what we're doing, whether it's the chamber, I T, the library, casino, or supporting our businesses, we need to bring outside expertise and build our internal expertise for the city, because this is what I think Raton needs. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Honeyfield, Commissioner Jacomo, Commissioner Schuster.
With your permission, Michael Ann, I'd like to just extend condolences to the Antinucci family and also Mr. Frank Antinucci, who was by far one of Raton's greatest citizens.
Absolutely. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. Mayor Protem?
Just a request that as budget time approaches, that we consider a commission workshop again. I like that approach.
On my schedule here, mid-March, I hope.
Awesome.
Okay. And I have no further comments, so this meeting stands adjourned.